Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will call it to order. And we will have a prayer led by Commissioner Turner. And Commissioner Jernigan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for another wonderful day, and thank you for all of your blessings this Christmas season, Lord. We're thankful to be able to celebrate the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ, and the many blessings that he's bestowed on each one of us here, Lord. And we think of the families that are affected, Lord, by having their loved ones serve overseas. We just ask that you continue to protect them, Lord, and we're thankful for the sacrifices that they're making overseas so we can enjoy freedom here at home. I ask that you be with each one of us here tonight, Lord, that we have clarity and consistent in our thoughts and in our actions that will be pleasing to you. I ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenyo.
Yes.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we start the actual agenda, I want to point out something that we made a bit of an error in the agenda. So if you'll notice under Item 6B, where it says "A Resolution to Approve the Proposed Storm Water Management Ordinance," that approval process requires a public hearing, and a public hearing was noticed, but the mayor's office overlooked that and didn't know that. So we did not put that under Item K, where we have the public hearings listed, and that's where it must be placed. That being said, since it was not put on the agenda, and since we have time to correct this at the next meeting, we're going to remove that item under 6B from the discussion tonight without objection from the body here. I think it's just the right thing to do, since we must do this under a public hearing, and we did properly notice it, but we didn't put it on this agenda. And I just want to, in an abundance of caution, not do anything that we don't think is completely transparent. So, Madam Chairman, that's under the Public Works Committee, but we just discovered that this afternoon, so I want to make that full disclosure. So, without objection, Item 6B is not going to be discussed tonight. Okay. The next agenda item is the reading and approval of the minutes, and Mr. Jeff Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order, and move that we dispense of the reading and adopt them as mailed.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Jernigan, anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we'd like to recognize some distinguished guests. Representative Mike Sparks, who is going to be having a resolution of appreciation for a very, very important person who's done a lot of good for a lot of individuals in our county, Mr. Rodney Hayes. And Mr. Sparks is going to bring with him, I believe, Commissioner Senator Tracy, Lieutenant Deal, and then Superintendent Solandy. You can come up here and stand, all of you together, with this presentation. And Mr. Hayes, we'd like for you to come on up and bring your wife with you, if you please, if you would.
While they're walking up, just wanted to share with the commissioners, there's an article from the front page of the Tennessee, and I believe it may have been Tuesday morning, about Tennessee jails and prisons being full, and budget growing by about forty-two percent since '03. You know, Mayor and Commissioners, it's both an honor and a privilege to be here before you tonight on this proclamation, recognizing Rodney Hayes. In Matthew 25, verse 36, it states, "When I needed clothes, you clothed me; when I was sick, you cared for me; when I was in prison, you visited me." Christ said, the disciples asked, "Well, when did we do this?" He said, "Well, when you done the least of my brethren, you done unto me." Just last week, I had the opportunity to have lunch with Governor Haslam, and the governor asked me, "What concerns do you have on your mind, Mike, issues facing your district?" And I said, "Well, one big issue is corrections, the substance abuse, the fatherless rate, and really just the way this culture's gone." All these things have fiscal impact, and all these things are conservative issues, you know, and more important, they're Christian issues. And the governor, to my surprise, said, "Mike, I appreciate you saying that, because our prison budget's increasing about forty million dollars next fiscal year." I also talked to Commissioner Schofield of Corrections, and, you know, the severity of the problem's just getting worse, and the answer is to come back to the counties, have y'all pay for it. You know, build bigger jails, hire more corrections officers, and hire more patrol officers. While in Nashville, my two years, you meet a lot of lobbyists for a lot of different issues. I've never met a lobbyist for the inmate, never met a lobbyist for the drug addict, never met a lobbyist for the fatherless. There's just not one. Hadn't seen it. But what I'm proud to say is, I kind of have met one right here, an advocate, Rodney Hayes, who's speaking up for some of these issues and making a difference. I ask these guys, who are also very passionate, Bernard Solandy, Superintendent Correctional Center, Lieutenant Chris Deal, and Senator Jim Tracy, to attend this, and appreciate y'all's passion and conviction. Proclamation issued by the Tennessee House of Representatives, "Whereas from time to time, the members of the General Assembly pause in their deliberations to recognize those courageous and compassionate citizens who, through their efforts, have served to improve the lives of those around them. And whereas Rodney Hayes is one such individual, who, for the past eleven years, has dedicated his time and energy towards teaching adult education classes at the Rutherford County Adult Detention Center and in the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center. Mr. Hayes is embarking upon a much deserved retirement. And whereas, after retiring from the corporate world, Mr. Hayes launched the Corrections General Education Diploma, GED program, through the Rutherford County Schools Adult Education Program. And since its founding, the program has enabled five hundred and forty-six student inmates to receive their GEDs. And whereas, as a teacher, Rodney Hayes has provided a positive role model for his students, offering them encouragement while giving them the tools needed to attain jobs and higher education classes. And whereas, it is also fitting that this body recognize Mr. Hayes for his many years of hard work and dedication to those in need. Therefore, I, Beth Harwell, Speaker of the House of Representatives, on this one-hundred-and-seventh General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Representative Mike Sparks, do hereby proclaim that we commend and congratulate Rodney Hayes on this occasion of his retirement, extending our best wishes for every, for each future success and happiness proclaimed in Nashville, Tennessee, on this twenty-seventh day, November two thousand and twelve. Congratulations, Rodney."
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
My wife, Karen. Last time I was here, I was with my dad. He's doing well, Joe Black Hayes, if you remember. He wanted to be here, but he doesn't get out much anymore. This is really nice. Both the workhouse and the jail have committed to a total program, education was just one of many things they do to help the inmates stop the return circles they do. The cost to the community is unbelievable, and it has nothing to do with buildings and staff. It has to do with all the costs the families bear when their loved ones are locked up. And I've never been involved in anything like that before. We work to get GEDs, because you can imagine being a felon in the street, looking for a job, and you don't have a high school diploma in today's world, you're going to go back to doing what you were doing to get in trouble in the first place. So, they called me, and they're proud that they're clean. And some of them go back, but about seventy percent of them that got their GEDs, which is quite a number, have not returned to our correctional institutions. They've been replaced by others that have like problems. This is wonderful. I had no idea about this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We really do appreciate that. Next, we have a resolution of appreciation for the New Vision Baptist Church. Calling on Commissioner Farley. And are those in the audience that you wish to come up here and stand with us as we do this?
Anyone from New Vision and Bernard Solandy, come on back up. And Superintendent, anybody else that you'd like to bring up as well? Please, sir.
It going off of what Representative Sparks had spoke of, you know, Bernard had come, we talked the other day, and he brought the people to public safety, and I thought it would be a good idea to recognize the church. You know, the recidivism rate in Rutherford County and all across this nation, if we can bring people to Christ or teach them how to get an education or things like that, our recidivism rate is going to go down and help these people. So, this is to recognize the church for what you've done for that situation. Resolution of appreciation for New Vision Baptist Church, whereas the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center staff and incarcerates have been the recipients of inspirational and devoted services given by Pastor John Spurgeon and the members of New Vision Baptist Church. And whereas throughout the years of service, ministry, and faithful dedication, they have guided and deepened the faith of countless inmates and staff. And whereas their mission to know Christ and make Him known has strengthened and impacted the daily operations of Rutherford County Correctional Work Center. And whereas the volunteers who generously give their time and skilled services have been the heart and soul of this facility. And whereas we commend all members of New Vision Baptist Church and cherish their continuous committed service, and whereas we hold dear Pastor John Spurgeon and his dedication with the valuable leadership as the facility pastor. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that we extend the resolution of appreciation to the New Vision Baptist Church members for their services at the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution and appreciation be forwarded to the New Vision Baptist Church by the clerk of this legislative body, resolved this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twelve, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second from several Commissioner Turner. All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that very much. In the service of New Vision, we do recognize and give you thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next, we have public comments, and tonight we have one speaker that wishes to
come forward, and that's Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Why do financial problems persist in counties, especially in Rutherford County? Since my speech to you on September thirteen, I have learned from another person, a former county commissioner, that he also had not been told by the Finance Department what is happening to our unspent surplus revenue. Apparently, the Finance Department removed this money from the budgetary process without the commissioners being given an opportunity to approve of this action and to authorize the Finance Department's policy of ordering the deposit of millions of dollars into two savings accounts, and apparently, the purchase of large CD investments with this surplus revenue was authorized by the Finance Department without your approval. State Senator Stacy Campfield telephoned me several days ago. He confirmed that these kinds of investment policies have taken place at the state level, county level, and city level. Regarding the apparent mishandling of four billion dollars of surplus revenue at the state level in two thousand and three, Campfield declared that there are no state statutes which either permit or prevent the investments or deposits of surplus revenue in bank accounts, either at the state level or at the county and city levels. He explained that, without legal backing, Governor Bredesen apparently authorized these investments and deposit policies for all three levels of government. Furthermore, Senator Campfield assured me that he would give his full support to having one of our Tennessee state senators introduce legislation, making it illegal at all three levels of local government to make large investments and deposits of surplus revenue, and furthermore, requiring the recycling of surplus revenue to the next fiscal year's budget, especially if that is what it takes to prevent a raise in taxes. When a county or city prevents recycling of surpluses to next year's budget, as is happening in our county, oftentimes, this action produces a shortfall in one of the county funds, giving a perfect excuse for the county or city to raise taxes. Financial expert Gerald R. Klatt wrote an article in which he stated, quote, "Running surpluses is stealing," unquote, because, quote, "It represents a taking from the taxpayers by the local government, an activity barred by the Fifth Amendment," unquote.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sandlin.
We have Lisa to speak on that just a little bit. I think she's chomping at the bit to do that anyway, and this needs to be cleared up, and I believe she can do it.
Going to let her speak, I doubt it's going to be cleared up, but we will make some routine effort. But I want to, before she says anything, I want to say we're extraordinarily proud of our commission and our Finance Department, and we welcome the continued audit of every book in this county government. There's nothing there that is not completely transparent. Now, Ms. Nolan can speak to it further.
Okay. The Finance Department has nothing to do with investments at all, nor do we order or direct where our money is held prior to us using the money to pay payroll or to write checks for goods and services. That is held in the trustee's office. Mr. Ted Beatty, our trustee, manages the county's cash, and it is under his purview and under the investment policies that this commission has adopted, is the guidance that he follows into where he places the money best to earn interest on those accounts for the use of the county. Now, as far as the surplus, I believe you could ask any member of the Budget and Finance Committee that we speak of the surplus throughout the budgetary process. It's not hidden.
Commissioner Farley.
Also, he spoke in his speech, he was told by a former county commissioner. I'd just like to know who the former county commissioner is that told him this.
I think that whoever that might be needs a little more education to properly understand this whole process, which is complex, but we welcome anyone from the public or any previous commissioner to come up and sit down with us, and we'll be happy to explore this in as much detail as necessary. Anyway, I think that's enough said on that, but we are a little bit taken back by the continued statements that we're doing something that's irregular and illegal. We completely refute that. All right. We're ready for elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Steering has several items for your consideration this evening. First of which, you will notice on your desk a list of notary candidates. I move for their election, Mr. Chair.
Second. All right, second. All of you in favor of the election of notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Second, we need to fill two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board. Prior to stating Steering's nominations, I would like to read a letter that's dated December seventh of this year. It's directed to the mayor. "I am very appreciative of the county commissioners who supported my nomination for the Rutherford County Correctional Correctional Work Center Board. However, due to prior commitments that would prohibit me from giving the time required, I must withdraw my name from consideration as a board member, Sheriff Robert Arnold." That leaves Steering with nominating one candidate, Mr. Virgil Gammon. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Phillips. Now, recognize Commissioner Farley.
I'd like to nominate from the floor, Mr. Tom Hartley.
Second, Commissioner Jordan and Jordan. All right. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Hartley, H-A-R-T-L-E-Y.
Any other nominations?
I motion these two nominations cease and be elected by acclamation.
And second, Commissioner Farley. I recognize Commissioner P.
I'd like to have a vote on that, please.
Excuse me, I didn't quite understand, sir.
I understand that, but I feel like there's a conflict of interest with one of those candidates, and I don't intend to vote for him.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion to, nomination cease, and we, so all in favor of the nomination ceasing, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, so we have two nominees on the floor, and we have two openings. So, all of you in favor of these two nominees, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, Commissioner P, did I do something? All of you that are opposed, please say no.
Hit late on that.
Let me see if I can undo that.
The motion was to elect him by acclamation, and you've got, he wanted to vote no on the acclamation, and that means you're going to have to have a roll call vote. You can't elect him by acclamation.
Okay, so I missed his motion on electing by acclamation. My error, and I apologize, and let the record reflect that we haven't done anything on this previous motion. We have two people nominated, and will need to have a roll call vote. So, Madam Chairperson, would you just please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Madam Clerk.
Voting for two.
Voting for two, voting for two, Mr.
Yes, no, vote for two.
Do we need to vote?
Let's just vote for two, Mr. Schaefer, yes.
Or not vote.
Or not vote. You have an opportunity to vote for two.
Okay. I would vote for Mr. Hartley. I appreciate Mr. Gammon, but I agree that it's, to me, it's a conflict of interest from the standpoint that it isn't too much of a party area to handle.
I vote for Mr. Hartley.
Bishop Black.
Hartley.
Hartley and Gammon.
And P.
Hartley.
Commissioner Cook.
I think Gammon's a conflict of interest.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Hartley and Gammon.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. Phillips.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. Sandlin.
Hartley. Gammon.
Mr. Turner.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. Allen.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. Stevens.
Hartley and Gammon.
Jordan.
Mr. Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Baum.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Coggan.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. Young.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. McAdoo.
Hartley and Gammon.
Mr. Ely.
Hartley and Ely.
Mr. Gooch.
Hartley and Mr. Gammon.
Mr. Serenyo. Commissioner, Hartley, twenty-one, Gammon, eighteen.
Both are elected to serve on the Correctional Work Center Board. Thank you very much, and I again apologize, Commissioner P, for not understanding what he was saying, and my error. Now, Mr. Gooch, you may continue.
We need to fill three vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board. Steering nominates Commissioner Steve Sandlin to represent the county commission, Mrs. Dela Goodman as a farm woman, and Mr. Anthony Scales as a farmer. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any discussion? All in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Next, we need to fill a vacancy on the Community Care Board. Steering nominates Mrs. Kay Jernigan. I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second. Mr. Cook. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next, we need to fill the coroner vacancy. Steering nominates Mr. Mike Nunley. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, for the record, Mr. Jim Atwater is being nominated or being appointed to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission by Mayor Burgess. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Do we have, we really officially don't have to vote on confirmation. All right, so we're just making an announcement, then, of this appointment.
It was your appointment.
It was, it is the mayor's appointment, yes, sir. All right, welcome, Mr. Abewater. Let's see, Mrs., I will announce that there's no unfinished business, and there's no report from the Purchasing Committee, and it's six twenty-eight or nine, I don't know what that clock up there says, I don't see it, but I think we'll just, six, oh, okay, that's a little fast. But anyway, in any event, public hearings, we will start those, and the first one is a rezoning and conditional use permit request, twelve dash A zero fourteen, by Mr. Nadal Abbas, located at thirty-one ninety-nine Franklin Road, and the existing zoning is R fifteen. The requested zoning is services. I requested a conditional use permit for professional office space and a beauty salon on approximately point four-five acres, and Mr. Demossi will give us more information.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Burgess, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This first piece of property is located on the south side of Old Ford Parkway, Highway ninety-six. The applicant's proposing to convert an existing house into an office space or possibly a beauty salon. The property will maintain its entrance onto Camden Court, it's actually a corner lot on the corner of Camden and Highway ninety-six. The applicant has created a paved parking lot prior to the rezoning of this property. At this point, it's unclear whether or not it meets dimensional requirements, although it does appear to be too close to the property line. That may be an issue if this is approved, because it would require a type-two buffet yard on the south side of the property, which is where it butts up to the property line. So, it's possible that the applicant may have to redo that parking area should this be rezoned. The Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this and did recommend approval with its conditions. One of the conditions is that the city of Murfreesboro does have plans to place a traffic signal at this intersection in the future, and has requested that right-of-way be set aside for that. We feel that that is an appropriate condition. Also, just for the board's information, this application is approved, as you know, will be going under our new zoning ordinance after the first of the year. While this will have to be rezoned at that time, this will probably be rezoned office professional. There's properties that surround this, especially to the west, on the other side of Camden Court, that will also be zoned a similar manner. With that, again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Have any questions of Mr. Demossi? All right, thank you, sir. Excuse me, was there one?
What services are in that, that he would be approved for?
You're talking the uses that he's asking? You're talking the uses that he's asking for? Yes, sir. What he's asking for at this point would be professional... I'm sorry, servicing with a conditional use permit for professional office space and a beauty salon. Under the... I mean, that could be a variety of different uses as far as the offices are concerned, or a beauty barber shop, beauty salon, something to that effect. Under the office professional zoning, it would... It would be about the same. There may be a few other uses in there, but nothing as far as like from a retail standpoint, like retail shops, general retail, or anything like that.
Alcohol, one of the...
Under the office professional... No, sorry, I don't believe it does.
What about under the food services or any of the other things you have listed there? Oh, I've dropped down one, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, now, yeah, that's the next application, sir.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Then, we will declare the public hearing open on this rezoning and conditional use permit request number 12- A014. The public hearing is open. If there are interested parties here that wish to speak for or against this request, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding this application? There being no one that wishes to speak, the public hearing is closed, and we recognize Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve this with the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission.
And a second from... Commissioner Tiffany Phillips. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all of you in favor of this, please then say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. The second request we have is a rezoning and conditional use permit... Excuse me, Mr. Schaefer.
Just a question on conditional use permit. I thought that the rezoning that we just did, you know, in the urban area and all that, was getting rid of the conditional use permits. So, why isn't this just being rezoned?
It's not effective until January the 1st. Okay, the rezoning and conditional use permit request 12- A015. On behalf of Mr. Lucas Nemeth, located at 2887 Barfield Road, existing zoning is R15. The requested zoning is services. Requested conditional use permit for general retail trade, general personal services, food services, and professional office space on the side of approximately six acres. Now, Mr. Demossi, further information.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. This piece of property is located at the intersection of Barfield Road and the newly-finished Veterans Parkway. There has been a previous rezoning case on this property back in 2005, requesting a similar use. However, that application was deferred and eventually withdrawn, because at the time, the city of Murfreesboro was in the initial design phases and acquiring right-of-way for what is now the Veterans Parkway. The applicant has provided a list of potential commercial uses for the property, which is located on the staff report. It's anticipated that the corner lot, he's asking to possibly divide it up into four separate tracks, about a six-acre parcel. He's not necessarily held to that. That's just a possible layout that he has, and there's actually a copy of that in your agenda packets. It's anticipated that they're looking at a convenience store gas station at the corner right there at Barfield and Veterans Parkway. Another portion of the property would likely be for professional offices, retail stores, those kind of things. And also, since the Greenway extension will be at the very edge of this property, which, again, there's something in your agenda packet that kind of depicts that, they're also considering uses that would possibly accommodate Greenway traffic, such as a bike shop or something to that effect. The Planning Commission recommended this application be deferred at its October 8th meeting in order to give the applicant time to provide schematic drawings for the project. There was some concern about the type of construction that the applicant was proposing to use. You'll see on your tables, there should be packets kind of showing the proposed type of construction that the applicants would like to use. We only had a limited number of color copies, so we've kind of distributed those kind of one per section, if you will, but everybody has at least a black and white copy to give you an idea of what it is that they're looking at. Due to the location of the Greenway as well, the city of Murfreesboro would also like to be involved in the site plan review phase if this application is approved. I spoke with representatives from the city about a week or so ago, and one of their main concerns really was access to the property, which is a concern we share as well, shared access and how that would impact the possible traffic on Veterans Parkway and Barfield Road. So, we're more than willing to work with the city in that regard as well. Some other issues that were brought up at the Planning Commission also dealt with the lighting of the property. One of the conditions that you'll see on the permit, if this is approved, is that all the lighting shall be shielded so that it does not cause illumination in excess of a certain, what's called 45-foot candles, measured at the district boundaries and the street right-of-way. With that, again, the Planning Commission did ultimately recommend approval of this by unanimous vote. I do see that the applicant is present, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Questions of Mr. Demossi? Okay, then, thank you, sir. Now, we will declare the public hearing open for those that wish to speak for or against the conditional use permit request number 12- A015. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this request, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. There's no one rising to speak, so we're going to declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner Farley.
I make a motion. We approve the request with the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission.
Second, Commissioner Young. Any other discussion? All of you in favor of this, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're ready for Commissioner Ely to start the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Report.
Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. County buildings, increased revenue, recognizing revenue from insurance recovery, $23,007. Increased expenditures with the proceeds going to building improvements for replacing the roof on the Coin Building and the rooftop HVAC on the Judicial Building, $23,007. From juvenile court, from unassigned fund balance, $8,733. This is to pay the accumulated vacation for the juvenile court magistrate who left employment to become the Circuit Court Judge, replacing Judge Ash. To other salaries and wages, $7,243 and the related benefits. Parks and fair boards, increased revenue from contributions and gifts of $50. This is to recognize a memorial gift to the Recreation Department on behalf of Mr. Cates and Mr. Estes, and this person specifically wanted this money to be used for the Recreation Department equipment and machinery parts. Fire and rescue from miscellaneous gasoline, $12,000, to fire and rescue diesel fuel, $12,000. Increased revenue, miscellaneous refunds, $1,733. Increased expenditures from a refund from insurance paid by Southeast Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department for other supplies and materials, $1,733. From the Sheriff's Department and jail... From jail and other contracted services, $11,500. To the Sheriff's Department rentals for the Narcotics Building, $11,500. Increased revenue from insurance recovery, $10,542. Increased expenditures, Sheriff's Department motor vehicles, $10,542. Increased revenue from contributions and gifts, this is from shop with the sheriff, $2,578. Increased expenditures, Sheriff's Department other contracted services, $2,578. Increased revenue from sale of equipment, $8,341. Increased expenditures, Sheriff's Department motor vehicles, $8,341. Resolve this 13th day of December 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Sandlin, any discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
Item L2B, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose DEA Fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department increased revenue from asset forfeiture funds, $3,648. Increased expenditures for confidential enforcement, $3,648. Resolve this 13th day of December 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
I...
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm... Idiot, I meant to vote yes on the first resolution, but my fingers just wasn't in coordination with my mind.
Well, then, we will instruct the clerk to reflect a vote of yes for Mr. Phillips on the first resolution. All right, Mrs. Ely.
Item L2C, a Drug Control Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Drug Control Fund be amended as follows. Drug enforcement, increased revenue, sale of equipment, $802. Increased expenditures, motor vehicles, $802. Resolve this 13th day of December 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item L2D, a resolution authorizing increase to cash on hand for the trustees' office. Whereas the Rutherford County Trustees' Office currently retains $700 of cash on hand in order to make change for their customers, and whereas it is being proposed to increase the cash on hand for the Rutherford County Trustees' Office to $1,000, and to designate Thomas E. Beatty as the petty cash custodian effective upon adoption of this resolution. Resolve this 13th day of December 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sereno. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item L2E, a resolution authorizing an increase in the DUI litter pickup fee. Whereas pursuant to Public Chapter Number 977, Senate Bill Number 3513, the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee amended Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5510403 relative to litter removal supervision fees for first-time DUI offenders as follows. S3, in order to compensate the probation office or county official who administers the state litter removal grant for costs related to the supervision of the offender while on a litter removal work crew, the offender shall pay to the probation office or county official who administers the state litter removal grant, a fee for each day the offender participates in a litter removal program. The fee shall be fixed by resolution of the county legislative body. The probation office or county official that administers the state litter removal grant may collect the fee before the offender is permitted to remove... Excuse me. Before the offender is permitted to perform litter removal services after each day service is performed or after all days of litter removal service have been performed, but the fee shall be collected before the office certifies that the offender has completed this condition of probation. The judge has the authority, however, to make an affirmative finding that the offender lacks a present ability to pay the fee and to include such finding in the sentencing order, which shall be submitted to the probation office or county official that administers the state litter removal grant. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5510403 as amended, Rutherford County's litter removal supervision fee for first-time DUI offenders be increased from $20 for each day the offender participates in a litter removal program to $30 per day. Effective upon adoption of this resolution, the public welfare requiring it. Resolve this 13th day of December 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, from Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, one no. Motion passes.
Ladies and gentlemen, before I present the next two resolutions, item F and G, I want to make a couple of comments regarding the resolutions to authorize refunding. We have bonds that are outstanding, that may be good candidates for refunding, with the ultimate goal to save the county significant dollars. And I want to make something very clear to the commission, excuse me, as well as those in the audience here and those watching on TV. We are not borrowing new money for existing projects or for future projects. This is a process that we have used many times, the goal being to save our debt service payments. There are two separate resolutions that you will see we will consider tonight. And if you will notice at the beginning of your packet, there is a refunding plan for tax-exempt bonds. This is to refund bonds that have never been refunded, so therefore, they are known as tax-exempt bonds. And then, you will notice there's another plan for taxable bonds, which is to refund bonds that have previously been refunded. Now, before I continue, I'm going to ask our finance director to give us just a short description of the difference in those two types.
The two types, generally for the county, tax-exempt debt is at a lower rate than taxable debt. The difference between tax-exempt and taxable to the person who is buying the debt is whether or not they include it as income when they're reporting their income to the IRS for 1040 purposes. When they buy taxable debt, then they would have to include it. If it's tax-exempt, then it's exempted from tax.
And if you will now look at the first refunding plan, and we'll have some discussion in just a minute, on the tax-exempt refunding plan, go please to page two. On the back, you will see columns of numbers, and you will see there is a potential savings of $3,957,860. So, a potential of approximately $4 million savings on those tax-exempt bonds. And then, look at your second document, the refunding plan for taxable. And if you will go to page... One, two, page three for you, you will see that there's a potential savings of 1.3 million for these bonds. This funding is possible because of lower interest rates. Debt will not be pushed out further, and if market conditions are favorable, we will move forward with this refunding. If the market conditions change, we may do one or we may do none. But I will assure you that the finance director and the mayor is working closely with our financial advisors, the Stevens Group, to make this determination. So, we are ready now for me to present item L2F, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation tax-exempt refunding bonds, Series 2013A. A resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $45 million for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding bonds of the county, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, premium if any, and interest on the bonds. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions or discussion? All right, then, all of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you, very good.
And item L2G, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation tax-exempt
of not to exceed thirty-six million dollars for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding bonds of the county, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, premium if any, and interest on the bonds. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of this, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous again.
Item L two H, a resolution approving the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget calendar. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget calendar be approved, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, with the adoption date for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget scheduled for June twenty-three, two thousand thirteen at nine a.m. Resolve this thirteenth day of December two thousand twelve. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Recognize Commissioner Jordan.
Ms. Ely, would you take just a few seconds and explain the May twenty-first date that that was changed and why it fell into the budget and the finance director's schedule?
Is that the date of your committee or have you changed the date?
Yes, our joint meeting date, and it is not the date that is on the official committee calendar.
And you will be communicating that to your committee, right?
I'm asking you to do it for me, Ms. Ely.
Okay.
It sounds so much better when you say it.
So what is the date? You tell me.
The twenty-first. Normally, I think our normal calendar is the twenty-eighth.
It's the twenty-eighth.
And it was the twenty-first, and that was...
You will notice May twenty-one is a joint meeting with the Health and Education Committee to review the Board of Education budgets. We do that every year, and so we will be meeting with those at the school board.
As far as I know, that's correct. The director and the school board have agreed to that date, as have we, but that's not our usual meeting date. But it's because of the, it fell so late in the month that, in order to meet the, the finance director and the budget committee...
deadlines, yes, to meet some deadlines.
Right. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the calendar for the budget? All right then, you're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Ely. Okay, there's no report from the Health and Education Committee, no report from the Property Management Committee. Now we're ready for a report from the Public Safety Committee and Commissioner Farley.
A resolution before we deny it with a contract between Rutherford County and Henry County on housing juvenile offenders. Whereas the attached contract between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and Henry County for Housing of Juvenile Offenders, a copy of said contract being attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated herein at length as set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the contract with Henry County for housing of juveniles, juvenile offenders. Resolve this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twelve, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second Commissioner Turner. Does anyone have any questions? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Commissioner Farley. Next, we're ready for Commissioner Phillips to report from the Public Works and Planning Committee.
A resolution to approve contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the turn lanes for McCormick Trucking. Whereas the attached local agency project agreement by and between Rutherford County, Tennessee and the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for construction of an industrial access road to serve McCormick Industrial Subdivision, a copy of said local agency project agreement being attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein at length verbatim as if set forth herein has been approved by the Public Works and Planning Committee. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said local agency project agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the local agency project agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for construction of an industrial access road to serve McCormick Industrial Subdivision according to the terms and provisions contained in said local agency project agreement. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the local agency project agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Resolve this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twelve. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion or questions? All right then, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much.
A resolution to send a resolution to the Congressman and two U.S. Senators to investigate and repeal updates to the storm water management ordinance. Whereas Rutherford County is obligated to comply with certain federal requirements contained in the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit and applicable regulations, forty CFR one twenty-two dot twenty-six for storm water discharges. And whereas the MPDES permit is issued every five years and at each such new issuance, Rutherford County is obligated to comply with any new changes in permit requirements of federal regulations. And whereas the federal government has failed to provide any funds for compliance with the new federal regulations, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it respectfully requests and notifies the congressional representatives of Rutherford County and the U.S. Senators for the State of Tennessee that Rutherford County requests they investigate and repeal any federal mandates that require updates to the Rutherford County Storm Water Management Ordinance. Resolve this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twelve. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second Commissioner Turner. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all of you in favor of this, then, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
No, let that reflect, two noes, I believe. All right, motion passed. Sir? Three noes, all right. Madam Clerk, three noes, and eighteen yeses, I suppose. All right, motion passed. Continue on, Mrs. Phillips.
A resolution to approve the road book. Whereas the Tennessee County Uniform Road Laws of nineteen seventy-four has set out various civil and criminal penalties for the working on private roads by the county highway department personnel. And whereas the road board has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent. And now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated fifty-four dash ten dash one oh three and fifty-four dash ten dash one oh four. These roads shall be the only roads which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this fifteenth day of December two thousand and twelve. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second Commissioner Farley. Is that a second, or you just wish to speak?
I don't need a second on the motion first.
Commissioner Sandin, there, Commissioner Farley.
Today's date is the thirteenth.
Let the record reflect that we will have the clerk modify that fifteen to the thirteenth day of December. Thank you for that catch. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we're ready for the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, and Commissioner Phillips will be making a presentation that reflects the work that's been accomplished within the special committee that's been working on road board and school board zones. So Commissioner Phillips, you may choose to speak from where you stand, or you can come up here and address and be, and that might be wise, or you can direct this at your leisure and...
Thank you, Mayor.
Let me reflect that, make clear that this is not on the agenda for actual deliberation at this particular agenda item. It is for presentation and discussion. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I think there's been a lot of, you may have even received some telephone calls about voting on this tonight. It is not the intent of the committee that was put together for this to come to a vote. This is just a presentation, in essence, the recommendation from the committee for this commission to consider and debate for a month or so, get public input, and then if a decision needs to be made, to be made in January. Let me kind of recap a little bit. If you will remember, back in the spring of this year, I think it was April or May, the commission decided to put together a redistricting committee to consider the school board and road board districts and zones and see if the map could be made more reasonable in some estimation for the constituents of our county, the general public as a whole. Some of the guidelines, the committee shall examine current road and school board zones and evaluate them based upon traditional redistricting principles of compactness, contiguity, respect for political subdivisions, which really means city limits, respect for communities of interest, and then protection of incumbents. The committee shall not consider altering any commission districts and can also make a recommendation on the implementation process abridging existing terms of incumbents. So that's what we did, and I'd like to introduce the committee to you guys once again that was put together. Keith Ratcher represented the road board, Aaron Holliday represented the school board, I represented you guys on the county commission, Tanya Nell represented Laverne, Don Lamb represented Eagleville, Jim Stubblefield represented Murfreesboro, Jerome Dempsey represented Initially, Koya Young represented an unincorporated area, and since he was elected to the school board, made him ineligible to serve, and he was replaced by Jim Estes. And then also representing an unincorporated area is Ed Phillips, and he also serves as our vice chair. And I think for sure Ed's in the audience tonight and is available to help me answer questions that I may not be able to answer. I'd like to extend my special thanks and gratitude to Mike Curtis of the Information Systems Department. He served an invaluable role in helping us with our maps and understanding those maps and has been a world of resources to the committee. I'd also like to give a special thanks to Nicole Lester, the Rutherford County election administrator. She attended every meeting and gave us input. I'd also like to say that this is what you asked for, is a recommendation, maybe not a per se recommendation, but an alternative to what we have right now for school board and road board zones. And that's what this is, is an alternative for you, for us as a commission to consider. It's not my recommendation, so nobody aim your guns at this messenger. This is just a presentation that we're making. Then when it comes time to make a decision, I along with you will have to make that decision as a commissioner. And I'm going to say that my mind is open and is not made up, okay? So, saying all of that, I think you have a couple of maps on your calendar, and the committee, when we started meeting, we were probably not as organized as we should have been, and it was probably this commissioner's fault, and we struggled for a couple of months trying to figure out the best way to go about this. And then we started looking at various maps, alternative maps, and we considered several different maps in total, and the one that you have before you now is what we affectionately termed option number four, and this is our ultimate recommendation. The, just talk about school board zones first. If you'll kind of bear with that, we've got one for road, one for school. When we put them all on one, it became so confusing that we just decided to talk about them one at a time, and it became less confusing like that. On the left, if you'll look at that, and I think Mike is going to put that up for everyone to take a look at. If you'll look at the map on the left, that is the current zones. And it's my opinion, the reason that this committee was formed was to actually consider a couple of options, and those were the compactness, the contiguity, and the respect for communities of interest. And if you look at zone number two, it is an example. It stretches from one end of the county to the other. Zone number four also appears to be somewhat problematic, and it's not contiguous. So we started looking at how to better proportion those, and this proposal that's on the right is the one that we ultimately recommended for your consideration. We feel like, the committee felt like, that it met all of the criteria, and that's the one that we recommended. We reached that consensus pretty early on. The last three to four months, we really got to looking at the incumbency issue. First off, we didn't really consider incumbency because if we did, we would end up with the map just like we looked at, just like we have. So we looked at a map that we thought would meet the criteria, and then we started looking at incumbency and election cycles. And talking about the school board, if you would look at proposed zone number one, school board member Aaron Holliday, he's up for reelection in two thousand fourteen. He would represent county commission districts one, five, and twelve. He currently represents districts five, eleven, and twelve. And that is also the makeup of the new zone one. So current is five, eleven, and twelve. New would be one, five, and twelve. And that is, under the proposal, Aaron Holliday would still be the only incumbent in that district. Zone two is the one that is problematic, and zone two is the one that created most of our discussion. If you look at the current zone, you'll see how big it is, and that's the one that has created the issue with incumbency. Zone two is currently represented by Koya Young, and Koya is a new school board member. And currently, zone one consists of county commission districts one, two, and three. The proposed would be two, four, and fifteen. That election cycle is eight sixteen. Also, there would be two other current school board members. Also, there would be two other current school board members that would be in the new zone two. It would be Helen Blankenship, and she was elected this year. She currently represents zone three. And David Nipper, he was elected this year, and he currently represents zone six. So, the new zone two would be county commission districts two, four, and fifteen, and the old is one, two, and three. Zone three, there would be no incumbents in that. Currently representing zone three is Helen Blankenship, as we said. Zone three would consist of county commission district six, eighteen, and twenty-one. The old zone is four, six, and seven. Zone four, and once again, that election cycle would come up in 2016. Zone four, Wayne Blair currently represents zone four, and he would be the only incumbent in zone four in 2014. Current zone four is eight, nine, and ten county commission districts, and the new districts would be nine, ten, and eleven. Zone five would be Terry Hodge, the incumbent. He's up for reelection in 2016. He currently represents zone five, and he would be the only incumbent in that zone. Currently, Mr. Hodge represents seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one. And the new proposed zone would be county commission districts thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Zone six would have no incumbents. Currently, David Nipper represents that zone, and the proposed county commission districts would be seven, eight, and twenty. And the current county commission districts are thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Zone seven is represented by Tim Hackett. He's up for reelection in 2014, and he would be the only incumbent in that zone. Current county commission districts fourteen, nineteen, and twenty. And the new proposed zones would be three, fourteen, and nineteen. The election cycles are for 2014, zones one, four, and seven. For 2016's are zones two, three, five, and six. So, the committee recommended the proposed map as the alternative, and the election cycle would be 2016. 2016 would be optimal to implement this, but the year 2020 would also work. The reason that the committee optioned to recommend, if the map was adopted, 2016, would be timeliness, and also, all three of those incumbents that would be in that same district would be up for reelection at that time. It could also be done identical to that in 2020, if the commission wanted to make a change and wanted to delay it until 2020 for various reasons. Any questions? We'll take the same look at the road board. And as you can see, the map is identical, the recommended map is identical. And running through the election cycle or the incumbency issue, these are the same districts and the same zones that we just talked about with the school board. Zone one, David Victory, who we affectionately call Rabbit in the Smyrna area, represents zone one. He would be the only incumbent in zone one. He currently represents five, eleven, and twelve, and he would represent one, five, and twelve, just like we talked about for the school board. Zone two, and he's up for reelection in eight, fourteen, I'm sorry, in 2014. Zone two, Keith Ratcher is the incumbent. I believe he's up for election in 2014. He currently represents zones one, two, and three, and the new zones would be two, four, and fifteen. He would be the only incumbent in that zone. Zone three is the one that is somewhat problematic versus zone two for the school board. Zone three, Randall Jones currently represents that zone, and he's up for reelection in 2016. The current and proposed, the current zones is four, six, and seven, and the current, I'm sorry, the proposed zones is six, eighteen, and twenty-one. The new map would also put Michael Anderson, which currently represents zone five, in zone three. So, in 2016, you'd have two incumbents that would be in that same zone, Randall Jones and Michael Anderson. Zone four, there would be no incumbents, and once again, the current is eight, nine, and ten for commission districts, and the proposed would be nine, ten, and eleven. Zone five, the proposed map would place Paul Johnson as the only incumbent in that zone. Paul is up for reelection in 2016. And zone five is currently represented by Michael Anderson, but the new map would put Michael in zone three. So, the proposed zones are, commission districts are three, sixteen, and seventeen, and the current is seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one. This is where it gets a little bit more confusing, and the reason that it does is because there would be a change in districts for Paul Johnson. His new district would be five, even though he represents currently zone six, but he would be the only incumbent in zone five. Zone six, Richard Stegall. Currently, that zone six is represented, as I just said, by Paul Johnson. And Richard currently represents zone four, but with the redistricting, if that's what we choose to do, he would represent zone six, and he would be the only incumbent in zone six. Currently, commission districts thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and proposed would be seventeen, I'm sorry, seven, eight, and twenty. Zone seven is represented by John Goad, and he would be the only incumbent in the new district, zone seven. Currently, fourteen, nineteen, and twenty, and proposed commission districts would be three, fourteen, and nineteen. The road board, it was realized that the road board and the school board zones were not in the same election cycle. There's been some attempt over the last couple of years to put in election cycles that would coordinate those two. It has become somewhat confusing for that to happen under the new proposed zoning map, but it could be done by six-year, a six-year election cycle or a two-year election cycle for two of those road board members.
Jeff, how many are Smyrna and Murfreesboro? How many school board members with this new proposal, and how many road board members will be affecting, representing the Murfreesboro and the Smyrna area? Like before, Laverne was talking about wanting the one when they had three. How's this affecting the Smyrna and the Murfreesboro area as far as representatives, the numbers?
I can't answer that, because I just don't know. I really don't. That the incumbency issue for the school board would be in zone two, and it would put three rural county commissioners in that same zone. But as you can look at that map, Gary, like, zone number four for the, for the school board is represented by Wayne Blair and would continue to be represented by Wayne Blair in that Laverne area.
Going off the road board map that's up there on the, on this slide, my area, District Seven, up there, that's in zone six. Part of my area, a majority of my area now is in the city limits of Murfreesboro. And then on zone three, next to, and they're in the red, there's still parts of Murfreesboro. So, that's two, just at first glance here, that's members of the road board that's affecting the city of Murfreesboro. So, there could be more by looking at it a little closer. I'm just thinking, are we creating, by this map, are we creating the same issue in the Murfreesboro and the Smyrna area that we were talking about, that they didn't want in the Laverne area? Is something I kind of noticed there, just by sitting here and looking?
I just don't know how to answer that. As a matter of fact, I can't answer it. It's possible, I've heard one comment, at least over the last 24 hours or so, that the new proposed map would cut Las Casas half in two. And that may be true, but Las Casas is cut half in two now by commission districts. So, I'm not sure that you're going to come up with an example that's going to create exactly what you want, every place that you want it. Commissioner Sandlin chaired the first redistricting committee, and I think at the end of that committee, help me, Steve, if I'm wrong, this zone map was brought up to that committee, and they considered it, but one of the top priorities of that committee was the incumbency issue. And as I've just explained to you, like zone number two as an example, would have put incumbents against each other, and that was not what that redistricting committee was looking at. What we chose to do was to look at a map, considering county commission districts, that would make more sense when it came to being compact and contiguous to each other, and still keeping in mind that the county commission districts have to be retained in those zones. I'm not sure that I can answer your questions about city representation and county representation. I know that there are some school board members as an example. I think that's the real reason that this whole thing was started, was the school board, and the road board is kind of caught up in it simply because they're dealing with the same zones. But when it comes to the zones as an example, those things have changed over the years as redistricting has happened, but the numbers of those districts haven't changed, and the map has become skewed a little bit. Now, I'm not saying that this is something that would be in the best interest of the Rutherford County citizens as a whole, but what I am saying is that it is an alternative to what we had, and our decision, I think, one that we'll have to make, is it indeed in the best interest of the county as a whole, and not one particular area or one particular street? I think the redistricting committee changed a little bit, and there are some city neighborhoods that have gone to rural commissioners, I think. I think Trey Gooch was affected, I believe Robert P. was affected, and there was probably others that I'm thinking about as well.
I want to clarify something, I'm not shooting at the best interest, so...
Thank you.
I want to clarify, you said something that kind of speaks on, what's in the best interest of the Rutherford County, and what's in the best interest of Rutherford County citizens?
Right.
My personal opinion is that if we got, it's a total of five people that are incumbents that were elected by a group of large amount of people, three school board members and two road board members, that were elected by people. And to me, by throwing those individuals all in the same boat, I think myself is doing a disservice to the citizens that actually went out and voted for or against those individuals.
Sure.
And that's the problem I've got tonight with what I'm seeing. And I watched the, on TV, if I didn't catch it live, I caught it on tape, the meetings that y'all had, just so I could kind of keep up the breast on it when we brought this up tonight. But that was, that's the problem I've got, to me, is that I think it's doing a disservice to those people, the constituents that we all represent, is the, I'm having a hard time swallowing on that.
I'm not disagreeing with that at all. That is probably the major objection that the committee even talked about during the process, too, was changing something. And that's the reason the election cycle, Gary, would be important in this process, when to implement it, if the new map were adopted, when to implement that, and allow all of the incumbents to reach the end of the cycle that they were elected to serve. The school board would be pretty clean with an election cycle of 2016 or 2020, either one. And one reason that the committee said 2016 was because if you wait till 2020, you've got a new census, and then a redistricting the year after that. So, they thought sooner would be better than later. But not everybody feels like that, to give incumbency, and especially on the school board and everything that those people have to learn, and the education that they have to go through to become qualified to serve on that board, to give them some time to fulfill their obligations to all the citizens. And that's the reason 2020 was discussed quite a bit, too. Steve?
Mr. Sandlin, do you want to ask a question, or?
Yes.
I thought you were heading in another direction, so...
I just wanted to be sure we're seeing who wants to speak.
To answer one question, and I've been asked a few times during this process, and it's been very informative, your committee on the TV with, like you said, I've caught some of the replays on it. Incumbency was the major law requirement that we had to fall within on the county commission. And the committee at that point also didn't feel like to trade off incumbency with road board and school board for what we have to comply with as county commissioners. And without incumbency, you can have nice circles, squares, triangles, whatever you want. You know, to look at two different maps, I mean, it's a good-looking map, what your committee's come up with. But the point is, the integrity of the citizens and, like you said, the voting residents of Rutherford County, and keeping that incumbency throughout. So, if, and we can even do that on the county commission, but there's going to be a major change with that, if we do that. So, the committee that I was over, incumbency was one of the major issues. Of course, along with compactness and all that, and you have to comply with all those state regulations, but I think we did a good job. It's just the point of, are we wanting to change this? That's the true question. And when are we going to change, like Commissioner Phillips was saying, whether it's 16, or in 2020, or whatever? I agree with you, 2020, we're having another census, so, you know, that's the major decision. So, this is informational now, or we're going to ask questions, get some feedback and all that?
Steve, that's, a lot of feedback that I've just received in the last week, was talking about making decisions tonight, and that's not the recommendation of the committee. The recommendation of the committee is map, is what we affectionately call map four, so that's the recommendation. That's the alternative that you asked us to come up with, and that's the recommendation, is that map. Not, you should do it, but come up with an alternative, and that's the recommended map, the alternative choice that you have.
Well, I didn't want to mislead anybody or anything, but Mr. Chairman, the school board and road board members are here. You know, I think we ought to suspend the rules and allow those that are here and probably want... rules and allow those that are here and probably wanted to speak or so, speak, or definitely tell them we're coming back in January to, 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 you know, vote on this or, or whatever. But I hate to waste their time and them wanting to speak, and we definitely want to make it available if we, if they want to.
First, I'd like to see if anyone else wishes to speak. Commissioner Pete?
Jeff, what was the vote coming out of this committee recommending this proposal?
Six to two in favor. The two opposition votes were not so much for the map. They liked the map. If we had to come up a recommendation, that was the one. Their concern was the 2016 election cycle that we recommended. They wanted it to, if we, if we adopted one, they wanted it to be 2020. But, but it was six to two coming out. Let me, let me just say also that the feeling that I had as this, as this group began to meet and deliberate and, and try to make this recommendation, you could see a change in that committee as, as we went forward. And I think that change was, I'm not sure that this will even work, to this map looks pretty good. It meets the criteria. And then when it came to the part of incumbency, especially the people who are representing the cities and the unincorporated areas, got less concerned about incumbency because they, as the citizens, are the ones that are going to vote. And, and I'm not saying that it still wasn't important, but when it came to the election cycle, what they were saying is that we don't need to spend a lot of time protecting incumbency as we do getting this thing right. That wasn't the unanimous decision coming out of that, but that was some of the comments when we got ready to take a vote, that incumbency was still important, but if we had to deliver an alternative, there's no way to protect incumbents, just like Steve said a minute ago. You, you couldn't do it.
All right. That being said, what's the wishes of the commission? Would you like to suspend rules and allow some of our school board members? So can I get a motion to that effect?
So.
All right. Commissioner Pete and Commissioner Sandlin and others, all in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will ask our road board members and school board members if you will be respectful and, and make some concise questions and points that you'd like to make. Come forward. And again, tell us who you are and so that we can have it for the record.
While Keith is coming up, let me just explain that from a legal perspective, we have two private acts, if this were adopted, that would have to be changed. One that deals with the school board, and that's a private act of 1967. And the only thing that would have to be changed would be numbering the county commission districts in the proper zone. We could do that locally, and the same thing with the school board, I'm sorry, with the road board, but that was adopted in 1951. It would require a two-thirds vote.
First of all, I'd say I appreciate y'all giving an opportunity to speak. One thing on, on this committee, alluding to Commissioner Pete's question a while ago, and I'm, I'm not here to argue, I just want to make, bring out some points, was the, on that committee, it was a six to two vote, but I did want to point out that the two that were in opposition to this was myself, and I represent the road board, and Mr. Aaron Holliday, and he represented the school board. So the road board and school board members on that committee was in opposition of that. A couple of things I wanted to point out was, I know myself, when, when the first committee was, was formed by some commissioners and some folks of the county, I attended most of all those meetings because I was concerned about whatever happened in that committee, how it would affect road and school board members. And then this, this committee was formed, and one thing I wanted to point out also, I think the difference when that committee was formed, and I know you had to, with the census and all, it has to be so many, wanted to keep so many in the same districts. And sometimes you had to change the district lines a little bit. But with what, what's proposed here will do more than that. It's going to change districts in those zones. I mean, the current zones I represent now is one, two, and three. With the new proposal, I would be representing two, four, and 15. So, and that's going to, that happens in this whole, a whole new proposal. So it's not just a matter of going down a road a few ways and taking in a little, another street or something like that to get the numbers up. This would be changing total districts in zone, in the road board and school board zones. And one other thing I wanted to point out was, I went to and seen Ms. Nicole Lester at, at the election commission, and I was concerned about how long the current map that we had for the road board and school board, where it had these same commission districts in these road boards. And the first road board and school board zone was, map was done in 1951, but the one that we currently have was in 1972. So this, the way the road board and school board zones in the districts they represent has been in place for the last 40 years. I know some of you have been on here a long time, some not so long. So, I mean, I don't know, I know the years that I've been on, been elected to the highway commission, I mean, I don't know of any problems that anybody or any of my constituents have brought to me in any of the districts I represent, saying that they have a problem with what's going on. And I know the point was brought out that, you know, it may be more of a problem for the school board, not so much the, the road board. The only other thing I wanted, another point I guess I wanted to bring out was, possibly in the future, you know, I know, I guess in 2022, there'll, there'll be, the census will come back up, and you'll have to look at possibly move some district lines. But at that time, I, I, I think, I know it's a long ways off, but if you would consider at that time, possibly including at least one, maybe more, road board and school board members to that district, where, you know, because whatever you do there is going to affect them, too. And at that time, you could, you would have the road board, some road board members, school board members, and some county commissioners, so you could have their input as well. Other than that, with the current proposed map, the one thing that I, the, the, me voting against that wasn't the, the time, or the 16 or the 2020 was not the only thing. I just, I just, I just not in agreement with the, with the map. Like I say, the current map that shows the districts it represents has been that way for the last 40 years. I, I don't know if, you know, I, I've talked to other road board members, some other school board members. I, I don't know that it's been a problem for them. I just, so, so that's why I, you know, I was kind of the thing, I mean, I, I'm like Commissioner Phillips, I tried to keep an open mind about everything. I just, I just did not see a problem with changing what we had, because the thing about it is, it was just not a thing of just changing some, going down a road and changing a, a few roads and adding a road into your district. It's changing districts within these zones. So that's, it's a dramatic change. Yes, sir.
Did you say under this proposal here, the three new districts, that you would have completely three new districts?
I would have two new districts. I currently represent one, two, and three. Under this new proposal, I would have two, four, and 15. And I can go down the list to tell you how it would change.
You've got two new, you're taking two of somebody else, so that's going to be four road board members. That's going to affect not just two.
Oh, it's going to affect all the road board members. All road board members and school board.
Talking about substantial.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question for Mr. Bratcher?
I do.
Question for Mr. Bratcher, Ms. Allen?
How long have you served on the road board, Mr. Bratcher?
About two.
Okay. And how many committees in total do you serve on?
Committees in the county?
Yes.
I serve on the board of zoning, and I serve on the board.
As I look at this map, you're my perfect example of somebody who has a servant's heart.
Has what?
Somebody who has a servant's heart.
Yes, ma'am.
When you have a servant's heart and you want to serve your community, you want to serve the public, you're going to do that, whether it's in an elected capacity or not in an elected capacity. And so, you know, I'm not the first person to sit in this chair in, in District 11, and I won't be the last person to sit in this chair. So as I look at this map and we talk about incumbency, you know, I'm less concerned about who's in that chair today, because good people are going to rise up. You're going to rise up. You're going to continue to serve us somewhere, somehow. You're, you're, you just have that heart, and that's your intent. So I absolutely hear what you're saying, but I think your argument that this map's been in place for 40 years, I think that's why it needs to be changed, because we haven't made these modifications along the way. This county's changed drastically in 40 years, and because we've not touched it, because it's been difficult, and it took a whole separate committee besides redistricting to just sit down and look at these two issues, I think that, that 40-year age of those map, that map needs to weigh as heavily as, as any of the other comments. But I, I do appreciate you and your service absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other board members from the road board here that wish to address this group and make comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Bratcher, were you finished with your presentation?
Thank you very much.
Tell the audience and the TV audience your name, please.
I'm Randall Jones. Right now, I represent Zone Three. And the, the problem that I've got with this new map is, the old map over here that you see, those people that are in my zone and in my district, they know me. Now, I represent all of Rutherford County, but I was sitting back there and I was listening. And the thing that bothered me the worst was, was whenever the commission took the time to redo all this, and study and all that, incumbency was part of their, what they was doing. No commissioner in here got pitted up against another commissioner. I think that's a good thing. Those are my friends in my zone. They know me. They know me as Bubba. And to sit there and tear apart a zone that I, I grew up in Rutherford County, and I represent a bunch of state boards and all that, and for a committee to not have as much information, and Mr. Phillips did an excellent job. I congratulate on what he did. But there's a lot of information that needs to be took in for the people in my zone right now, get my representation taken away from them. Because a little committee, they got together and stuff, and what y'all asked them to do and everything, which I said they did a good job. But if you can't protect the people that's in my zone, that I represent, then, but you represent your area and you protected your incumbency whenever you was up and all that, which I don't blame you, I would, too. But don't do the school board and don't do the road board, different, because of one little area down here, and I am down here in Buck Cannon. Laverne is all the way at the other end. I have got no clue how in the world I got thrown into mix in this. And I've had several, several phone calls in my, in my area where the people don't understand what's going on. And I don't know how many of y'all really know what's going on. I really don't understand all this. The only thing I'm saying is, I represent Zone Three, those are my people in there, and I'd like to keep, thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the gentleman some questions briefly? Just from my understanding, have you thoroughly studied both of those maps in depth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're familiar with the process of redistricting, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so you're familiar with the concept of contiguity? You know what that means, where districts are, are together in one district?
Right.
And you're familiar with compactness, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with what common interest, common areas means, is that correct?
Right. Yes.
Okay. And you understand what it means to respect municipal borders, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you agree with the current map on the screen of these zones has a district that is two islands?
Well, you know, there's a lot of things that's got a lot of islands and all that stuff in there, but you know, you can draw maps up any way you want to draw them, and, and the districts and all that's in there, and redraw the lines. If I'm not mistaken, the reason Michael Anderson is, is in, is now being moved in mind is because he lives on one side of the street set up.
Well, I mean, my question was, would you agree with the current map has a district that's two islands?
Yes.
Okay. And would you agree?
I mean, let's don't engage in too sort of a...
This is very important.
You can ask questions, make your comments, and you're, we're not debating.
This is very important for our constituents to hear from the people that are opposing this, the very reasons why we're trying to make the changes. He just admitted that the, the current map has two islands, and one of the principles of redistricting is contiguity, and that map does not have all the districts contiguous. And so, would you agree that Laverne is carved into three different zones?
Yes.
Okay. And would you agree with the proposed maps has all of the districts that this committee proposed, are all the districts in it contiguous? They're all lumped?
They will.
Okay. And would you agree that they're more compact?
Yes. I don't agree with the map.
Okay.
And the road board sent a resolution to the commission.
Would you agree that this proposed map does more to respect the borders of municipalities?
Yes, but it doesn't do anything for the people in those municipalities that I represent them now.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order.
The rules are suspended.
Point of order. We've asked them to come up and give their comments about this. That's what they need to be doing. This is, this is trial and jury on deposition stuff. We're not doing that.
We're allowing a bit of flexibility here in Leeway, so we want all of you to be respectful. This is a little bit unusual for us. So Mr. Stevens, if you could sort of make your points and allow you to finish your...
I had a question about the road board vote. The, the board voted about?
They, they, you should, the mayor should have a letter from the road board stating that they rejected this map.
Was that unanimous?
It was four to three.
And why did the three vote against the motion?
They called before they lived there. They, they, they wouldn't have involved in it.
Would you be surprised if one or more of them told me that they think that the current map doesn't make any sense and the new map does make sense?
Well, the board voted that it didn't.
Okay. And as an elected official, to whom is your loyalty pledged? Is it to yourself or to the entire citizenry?
The entire citizen of Rutherford County. This is my fourth term.
Okay. And then which of the seven board members, there's two that are in one zone, which zone has the two members that are placed together?
Me and Michael Anderson.
Okay. So are you upset about it because you're one of the ones zoned with somebody else?
What I'm upset about is, Michael Anderson is in the city. He got moved in mind. You're not treating Michael fair because there's no way in the world he knows anybody in my area. And Michael Anderson is this good fella, and you're sitting there moving him in places that he has no idea about. That's why I like districts. I like my county commissioner, Mr. Joe Frank-Jerkins. When I call him, he knows me, and he knows, and he knows the community he's in and everything. That's why I like districts. And when they call me, I know what I can do. Of course, I get called, just like y'all do, from everybody across Rutherford County. But that's the main reason why, is because those are my people that are in those, in Zone Three, and that's the main reason why I am against it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other road board members here? Now, we'll give the school board members, if they so choose, to give us their view on, and comments regarding the alternative proposal that has been developed. And tell the audience who you are, please.
I'm David Nipper. I'm with the Rutherford County School Board. Currently, I am in Zone Six. Rutherford County School District is the sixth largest district in the state. We have about 40,000 children. We have exceptional teachers. We've got a great administrative staff. We have outstanding support staff in the district office. We have outstanding support staff in the district office. But with all of that, it takes a school board who is knowledgeable, who understands the school district. We are required by the state of Tennessee to take additional training, education, and that doesn't come by, by easy. I've sat in the audience at school board many months before I was elected to the, to the board. Mr. Blair, he sat there many years before he was elected to the board, watching and learning as the school board met and worked out. It takes time. It takes commitment. It's not easy to be on the board and make decisions that we made pertaining to Stewart's Creek that affects people, that affects their homes. Just like you, decisions that we made are tough decisions. By putting all three of us into one school, one, one zone, you've effectively really just, you've negated what we've tried and worked so hard to do over the last few months, all the time that we've sat there. Another item is the new Zone 6. If you notice, that is the fastest growing area in this county. It incorporates Eagle Bowl, which I was told today that when they get their sewer line in place, they're going to start booming. The housing, the industry will go nuts there. You've got Blackman. You've got Stewart's Creek area. You've got Rock Vale area, all in that one zone right there that will and is very, very volatile right now. It is booming. We can tell you that from the school board point of view, that we've been studying these areas. Those are very, very hot areas right now for development. Zone 3, it, it is available, it could go very quickly into a lot of building with the new Joby Jackson area coming around. You're going to see a lot of development there. We need representation like we have now. Ms. Blankenship, who's in Zone 3 right now, she knows her area, she knows the people. I know the people in my area. All of us know the people in our areas and we know what to do. But I just wanted to point out that, that we are here for, not just our zone, but we're here for the whole county as well. And thank you for your time.
Okay. I know there are other school board members here. Do you wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Helen Blankenship and I represent Zone 3, and that is commissioners' districts 4, 6, and 7. As Mr. Phillips said, I'm sorry, Mr. Phillips, it's not Last Cassis, it's Ketchul. Ketchul has always been, and I'm going to say this, Ketchul was, 41 years ago, split up with the opening of two schools. Then again, three years ago, it was split up again. I have been charged by the people who live on both districts to say, hey, they'd like to keep Ketchul together as much as possible. The only time Ketchul is represented as one unity is right now. You may not know this, but that is the only time they're represented, is in the school board and in the road board. It is Districts 4, Districts 4 and Districts 6 go right down Woodbury Highway. I'm very, it's sad to say that they, that we have to do this. I understand we need to rezone and redistrict. I understand that. But we represent our areas. We represent our areas, we know the people. Good grief, if you want to find me, most afternoons, most people can tell you where I'm at anytime between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock. If you want to come find me, you can come see me in my rubber boots. I have no problem with that. You can come follow me around. And then if I have to go pet sitting, you can go follow me to my pet sitting clients. I drive probably with the pet sitting clients, because this is getting, I call this is Christmas time, I have pet sitting clients that go all the way down into my zone. So I see what's happening. The neighbors, they know who I am. Of my clients, my clients are part of my community. That is what makes me so good at what I try to do. I represent not just Ketchul, I represent Buchanan, I represent Christiana, Fosterville. I go all the way over into Barfield and almost, almost all the way to 96. I think it is part of 96 Highway I go. As a teacher and educator, I know what is required. I don't know if any of you realize, I've had to take eight days so far since being sworn in to be, to do something with the school board. I don't know how many jobs you've got that will rely, will allow you to eight days off without being fired. And that's just starting as of September, after I got sworn in. I reckon, I just not, just represent my zone, but also the other zones. I liked going when, as a, we went to, as a whole board, we went to Smyrna, we went to Laverne, we were at Riverdale and at Blackman High Schools during our rezoning. We got to meet our, and meet the people. We got to see the people, hear the people, and hear what they have to say. If you don't think that is not appropriate, I'm sorry. But we, well, we, as a, as a board, thought that was very important to do that. And I know my other board members were very pleased with the representation they had. I cannot vote, I cannot support the new one. I'm going to say this, this is just after, while I was sitting there listening to these meetings, something was said, and you've got to realize, I've only lived in two houses my entire life. They're both on the farm, the family farm. Most people know us as Blankenship Pumpkins. I still live on the corner of the farm, in my own house. But when someone told me I shouldn't move to keep my zone, I did not appreciate that. I'm sorry, folks, but that, to me, I own my house, and that is very much important because I don't know many people who would milk cow, admit to milking cows and paying for their house while milking cows. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that wish to speak? We're just having an expression of our views and getting clarification and comments. Any other school board members that wish to say anything? Are there any other commissioners that wish to make comments or ask questions? Commissioner Pete?
I just wanted to make the comment. I've heard it said a couple of times that we asked them to do this and put this map up here. Well, I'm not part of that "we." I didn't ask for this map. I don't appreciate it. You know, personally, I'd make a motion to stay with our current map and vote on it tonight and be done with it. If I'm not mistaken, maybe Jim can enlighten us on that. But to change this, do you not have to have a two-thirds vote all the way across? So if you've got seven people here that say no on this, this is done. Is that correct?
I don't think you have to have a two-thirds vote tonight. The problem would come if you adopted to go to the change with the new map, then you would, it would require changes to the private acts. And when the private acts came up, you'd have to two-thirds vote. So you'd only be halfway across this bridge if you passed the map. You still need to go the other half to get the private acts amended to make sure these zones line up. But tonight would not require a two-thirds vote to accept the proposed map that the committee has adopted.
Commissioner Farley?
Basically, theoretically, the end result, you're going to have to have a two-thirds vote to pass the complete thing, correct?
You'll have to have a two-thirds vote to adopt the changes to the private act.
Right. I'm like Commissioner Pete. My understanding was that this, that the committee makes a recommendation, and that recommendation could be a new map. The recommendation could have been to leave it like it's already, you know, in place. Is the way I understood it, the, the committee being set up. That's what I understand. I mean, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. If, if I'm the only one that understood that, I could have been, I could be wrong. But I see some heads being shaking, yes. So...
The, the committee has done their duty in that they have studied this and reviewed this, and, and they have proposed by a vote of six to two, that this is the best thing they can come up with. And if you choose to vote it, on it, that's the only thing they're going to put on the table that they think is reasonable for you to consider. Commissioner, now, nothing is on the table, and I think because of the complexity of this, they felt it wise for you to review this, have all the information, including the school board and road board members, and not be forced to make a decision without thorough and deliberate consideration. Commissioner Schaefer?
I bet if we went back to the 1970 census, when these maps started coming out the way they are now, you'd find there were 65,000 people approximately in this county. In 2010, it was 262,000 in the 2010 census. Things change. I haven't moved, and I've been in District 1 ever since I moved here 30-some years ago. But I'll tell you something else, is a heck of a lot of other people aren't in the same district that I'm in, that are now over in Smyrna. I used to have to go and vote in Smyrna. Things change. And that's why I think that people brought this up about that, about the looking into redistricting. One other thing, you can go back to about 1770, something like that, in this country. Give you a history lesson. One of the main reasons, if not the main reason for the revolution, was taxation without representation. And that's what happened up in Laverne, why people up there started clamoring. Because until Aaron Holiday came, there was nobody that really cared for years about up there, and they have memories, and they don't want it to happen again. So that's why they brought their part up. Then others started looking at congruence and this type thing. And I'm just pointing out things, and I think that what we tasked this body to do was to come up with a recommendation, be it nothing or whatever. And they came up with a recommendation. That's where we are. And I personally think that we ought to look at it, and we come back next month and decide what we're going to do with it.
Other discussion, Commissioner Jordan?
I just have a question. We've sat here and talked about it. Is the committee going to meet again and take all the stuff we've talked about? Because I think I'd just then go and vote on it one way or the other. But if they're going to vote on it and take our comments and critique it and change it and all, then great. But if not, what's going to change between tonight and a month from now? I mean, there's no more meetings going to take place? There's no more, if we're just all going to think about it? That's fine. You know, but I'm just wondering, is there a reason why we're waiting the next month? And if it's going to be critiqued and brought back with any adjustments or anything?
Yes. The way we've done this is at the request of that committee, they thought it would be appropriate to the, to the complexity of this, that you have a complete and thorough opportunity to review this. Commissioner Phillips may respond to that. I think he said he doesn't plan on having a meeting to review this and maybe potentially make any changes. Commissioner Phillips?
We have no other, the committee has no other scheduled meetings. Let me just say that the same presentation was made before, last week, before the school board and the road board both, before we came here, just to give them the same information that you're getting tonight. And if I can reiterate once again, the initial meetings that this committee had were somewhat confusing because that committee knew that a new map would be a tough nut to crack. We talked our way through that and realized that our job was to give you guys an option, whether or not we as individuals supported that. And let me reemphasize that again and again and again. This is the alternative, the recommended alternative that that committee come up with. That presentation before the school board and the road board indicated that we weren't asking for a vote tonight, just the presentation. Me personally, I think that, that I wouldn't probably be living up to what I've communicated as a committee member to the school board or the road board either, if it were to come before a vote tonight. I also said that I knew this commission well enough to not put that out of the question. But I know that there are members, by some telephone calls, some general public type of people, from some telephone calls that I have had, that have other input, not just against it, but are in favor of it. And I don't think we'd be doing those guys a justice by not listening to them as well. So I really, really think the committee's recommendation was for you guys to think about it for a month, get all the input that's out there, make sure we got all the input out there, and then make that informed decision. Once again, as a commissioner, I'm open, okay? I'm not closed-minded about it. I haven't already made up my mind, but I'm also not committed to support this. I'm just like you. I've got school board members and road board members that can influence and will influence me as well. So I, I think that the, the vote tonight would be somewhat premature. We have not got all the public input that I think we need to make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
I was one of the ones that voted to have this committee created to look at it. Now, looking back, I think that was a mistake. Of course, I didn't vote for the redistricting the way it was. I didn't like it. I had a downtown community, and now I'm out in Blackman. You know, I was, it's, my district's always been downtown Murfreesboro. Yeah, moved up in the world, okay. And I like those folks out there, so I was a, I was a volunteer firefighter out there, so I like those folks. But this is the bed we made, and we got a lie in it. I mean, that's the truth. Y'all know it. The, the redistricting passed, not unanimously, but by a big majority. They should have caught this then. It's, it's our fault as commissioners for making that decision on the redistricting for our commission districts. So the way I look at it is, we've got to live with it. Live with it the way it is. There's nothing wrong with that. But it's not fair to these road board and school board people that were elected by constituents just like we were to change it up in the midstream. And I, I think the best thing to do is wait till 2020. And like I said, I was one to create this committee to look at it, and, you know, we just got to deal with it. I mean, that's, we voted the way, it's not going to pass the private act. Y'all want to talk about wasting time? We're wasting time right now. I'm wasting time by talking. And it's not going to pass by two-thirds vote. So I mean, y'all know it, I know it. I mean, that's the truth. I speak the truth, so that's, that's all I got to say.
Hey, let's, let's sort of regroup here. Under the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, it's simply listed as an item for presentation. So if we're through discussing the presentation, the pros and cons, we cannot vote on it at this point. We can go to any other business, and anybody that wants to do anything can do anything they want to there. But right now, we need to move on, and unless someone has something else constructive to talk about as far as the content of the presentation. So that's a report from the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee and the presentation on their road board and school board zone efforts. Now, is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Farley?
What you just said, it's appropriate under any other business, if we want to bring up something that was on the agenda for a call for a vote.
Up to you. That's, now this, is it related to this?
Yes, sir.
This body has a right to bring up anything they want to under any other business. Have to advise yourself as to whether it's appropriate or in the best interest.
Well, like I said earlier, I, I watched, I'd say pretty much 95% of those meetings, whether they taped or live. And one of the biggest things that I seen, and this is no disrespect whatsoever to any committee member that was on there, because it was confusing to me, look, watching it, trying to get some information that was going on. And if it's, some of the committee was confused on a lot of the, the election cycles and who's in, you know, who's, what incumbent is where and all this other stuff. I honestly believe that we're going to be, if we approve this map, we will be doing the Rutherford County citizens an injustice. How this thing first started was Laverne, wanting one school board member and one road board member. Well, actually, it was one school board member. Well, actually, it was one school board member. They've got an excellent school board member from Laverne, Mr. Aaron Holiday, I think, I don't know if he's still here or not, there he is. I mean, they've got a school board member, now they've got three people that are actually representing Laverne, and the way I look at it, if a school is running in Laverne, I can count to four real quick, and there's three already there. And I don't think Laverne, in my time being up here, has been, been, you know, denied schools. I think they've been given a lot of schools. I want to make a motion that we deny the map, the recommendation from the committee, and keep in place the existing map that the road board and the school board are under today.
Second, back to Commissioner Young. Discussion. Commissioner Allen.
Now, I was one of the driving forces behind asking that this committee be established, and so I can't let this vote pass without thanking them and thanking Commissioner Phillips for taking the lead on this, because it is a very complex, very involved issue, and the reason that it's hard to follow is for that very situation. So it needed its own committee to be able to look at that. I intentionally stayed as far away from that committee as I could while they were doing their deliberations and their studies, because I didn't want anybody to think that I had a preconceived idea of which way I wanted this to go, because I really didn't. I really just wanted it studied. They come back with this map that's a 40-year update, that on its surface makes a lot of sense to me. And I don't know a lot of things, but I know when I ran for office, I felt like if I came up here and I made logical, thoughtful, well-reasoned arguments to reasonable people, that I would persuade you, and that you would vote with that logic. This won't be the first time I've been disappointed, and I'm sure it won't be the last time I'll be disappointed, but I think you need to think long and hard about the county and what's best for the county, and not, I, 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 me, 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 and incumbency. If I had my preference, the original redistricting committee would have never considered incumbency. I think we do ourselves and our county a disservice. Like I said earlier, I'm not the first person to sit in this chair, I won't be the last person to sit in this chair, and I think it's the height of arrogance to think that smart people will not rise up and serve this county, regardless of how the districts are drawn. Thank you.
B.
This map has changed every 10 years. There's been redistricting. My district has changed every time that there's been redistricting that I've been up here, which is only two times, but, you know, each time before, I lost areas where the municipalities had came in and brought those parts into the city, and being a rural commissioner, I lost those parts. This time, that has changed, and I've picked up some that I used to have years ago, and I have new districts, and I lost probably a third of the district that I had in the past. So this is a very fluid situation. It changes. It hadn't been stagnant for 40 years, and the reason it's changing is because we're growing, and we're all, part of the redistricting plan is for every one of us to represent as close as we can an equal amount of people in this county. And when we do that, it also is pretty well going to equal out the board members for the road board and the school board. So this has not been stagnant for 40 years. That's a little bit, getting a little bit old tonight. Thank you.
Other discussion, Commissioner Jordan.
Well, I think the incumbency thing should have been talked about before we did our first redistricting. If we weren't going to deal with incumbency, we should have decided that last spring or last summer, and done the redistricting accordingly. It looks a little, I do agree with Mr. Jones on the road board completely, looks a little bit self-serving for us to get our districts set for 10 years, and every one of us got protected, here we are two months later, let's throw them onto the bus. That's just wrong. I kind of liked the new map, but I wanted, we ought to have made a pretty map out of all 21 commission districts, let us all just duke it out amongst ourselves, you know, in four years. But to save our own butts and do them this way, in my opinion, is wrong. That's why I'm going to vote to leave the districts like they are.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to thank all the citizens and all the people who worked on that study committee. It was very tedious work, and they spent many nights, many hours, learning about redistricting and learning about the districts in the county, and I wanted to commend them for their work and thank them for their service. First, this was not brought up to satisfy the people of Laverne. Somebody who lived out toward Eagleville had called me and asked me if I knew that the school board and road board zone that we had passed was not contiguous anymore. So that's when I went and looked at it. I hadn't thought anything about the school or road board zones when we were debating our commission districts. I don't think anybody did, from what I remember, and we just got this map that's interesting, to put it nicely. But then the people in Laverne started picking up on the fact, too, that they had been split into three different zones, and they're the minority section of each zone. And then other people started realizing, we have a district that looks like a chicken foot in the middle. And then I went through our principles of redistricting and realized we violated every single one of them, except incumbency. And then I started researching the laws about zones and districts, and state senate districts have to be contiguous, state house districts have to be contiguous, commission districts have to be contiguous, congressional districts have to be contiguous, and if you have districts within a city, those have to be contiguous. So the policy of the state of Tennessee is to have contiguous districts. Now, it doesn't specifically say that school board zones have to be contiguous, but it seems pretty clear from the law that the policy is that they want us to have contiguous districts, and it's a bad policy not to, to have islands scattered here and there. Now, I do wanted to mention something about the private act. The private act says that we can make changes to that scheme at any time. I don't think we have to change the private act if we readjust which districts go in which zones. The statute says, or the private act says, that the commission can make any redistricting as it sees fit. So I don't know that we'd have to actually go and update our private act. It would be logical and good to try to do that, so what we're doing and what's in the private act are the same. But I don't think that we have to, to make the redistricting plan work. Just last month, we updated our planning zoning regulations, and I heard somebody say, or multiple people say, that it was 30 years old, and it was outdated, it was confusing, it didn't make sense. Well, now we've heard tonight, other people have already brought this up, but this map's scheme is 40 years old, and it's outdated, too. Just look at it. This map scheme probably worked back in 1972. But when's the last time we had regrouped which districts went in which zone? And you can just look, it's getting more and more contorted. If we don't make changes to the map now, what's it going to look like in 2022 when they do the redistricting and try to protect incumbents? Look where the incumbents now on the current map, they're right on the borders. These districts were drawn just so we could get them into their zone. I can't imagine what it's going to look like in 2022 if we don't try to make some changes to it now. Times have changed, so should our zoning maps. Now, I do want to note that the citizens on the committee are the ones who recommended that we make the change. They didn't have their hands in the pie in any way, no bias, no personal preferences with respect to elected officials. They just looked at it objectively. They said that the map didn't make sense. They said this map does make sense, we recommend that you adopt this. I've been working on this issue for over a year now, and I'm more convinced than ever that the commission should adopt the recommendation of that committee. The districts are all contiguous, they're all compact, we have areas of common interest that are better aligned now, the borders of municipalities are more respected. It does respect incumbency as much as possible. Ultimately, three out of the 14 members will be affected negatively in 2016. If all five of the ones that are drawn into the zones together run against each other, two of those will be elected back to office possibly, and then three won't. But three out of 262,000 people is .00001 of our population that's affected. That is 1,000th of 1%. Common sense should play into this at some point. Just look at the two side by side. I've shown this map to countless people at Rotary Club and other places, and I have not found a single person yet that was informed about this situation that said the one on the left made more sense. It addresses the concerns of the people down toward Eagleville who called me originally and said that they did not want to be segregated from the rest of their district. It addresses the concerns of Laverne and that it gives them more concentration in an area. It makes the amount of road board miles per district more equitable to the fullest extents possible. As Mr. Nipper said earlier, we've got a plan for growth. The status quo map does not allow for planning for growth. The new map does. As Murfreesboro continues to expand out, as Smyrna continues to expand out, those districts are going to be better off with a new map. It plans for the future, and it's the right thing to do. Now, those are 12 reasons why we should change the map. I have yet to hear anybody in over a year give a logical reason, setting aside personalities and incumbents. I have not heard the first logical reason yet why map one, or the current map, makes more sense than the recommended map. And that's what I want to hear. So I challenge you to take the personalities out of this discussion tonight, and look at this objectively, and decide, is the one on the left the map you would have drawn? Or is the one on the right the map you would have drawn if you were tasked with doing this yourself? We have a clear contrast here. We can comply with the standards we outlined in the redistricting process, or we cannot comply with the standards. We can be fair, we can be unfair, we can be objective, we can be subjective, we can make our vote based on principle, or we can make it based on politics. We can vote for the people, or we can vote for your pals. We can vote for the good old boy system, or we can vote for the good folks who put us in these offices in the first place. We can vote for what's right or what's wrong. It's really that simple. If we don't do something about this tonight and make some changes to this map, who's going to do it in the future? And if we don't do it now, when is it going to get done? I think that our citizens deserve the best product that we can possibly give them. I'm not convinced that anybody can look at our citizens and tell them that the current map is the best product that we have to offer them, with a straight face. I do believe that if you vote for the status quo, you're letting down the whole county and your constituents. History will judge this commission in many years on what we do here tonight. This vote is arguably the most important vote that we will cast in our four-year term. Our economy, our community, our future depends on our education system. Our education system depends on the school board members, and the school board members depend on the map. It's all connected. Fair representation for the school board is a key ingredient to our success. So my question to you is, will you make the right decision to vote to modify this map? Will you make the right decision to modify the map, or will those in the future look back at you and wonder why you squander this opportunity to make a historic change? You know that our current map is outdated, you know, you know that the second map makes more sense, and you know it's the right thing to do. So I'm asking you to do that tonight.
Let me let those that have not spoken first, Commissioner P., Commissioner Jordan, can say something, please, and then we'll come back. So, Mr. Jordan again.
Well, the people in my area have looked into a whole lot different, Mr. Stevens. My phone's rung off the hook, because the area I got up here, you talking about three school board members and two road board members, it's going to affect. And I think a motion we've got on the floor here to leave it like it is, and if we want to get it changed, when the next redistricting comes up, get it changed. But I ask you to vote for this motion here, and let's get through with this once and for all. We've got other stuff need to do. Besides, keep harping on it.
Commissioner P., and then I may see Commissioner Tiffany Phillips holding her mic.
Now, the reason I'm voting to keep these maps the way they are is not because of the good old boy system, or because I happen to know Mr. Blankenship, or, well, actually, I know almost all the road board and school board members. The reason that I want to keep these people there is because Rutherford County, in case you had noticed, has been noted, noticed by the state of Tennessee as being one of the higher outstanding school curriculums and school zones in this entire state. I forget what, Jeff, you can help me there, what were we recognized at here just a few months ago?
Exemplary.
Exemplary, all right. That's one reason. We've got a, we've got something that works, and he's wanting to throw it out with the dishwater. Now, I don't know how many of you drive the roads in Rutherford County and remember what they used to be like, or maybe you need to go over to Cannon County and see what they're like over there, or some of these other places. Tennessee has been voted nationwide by the Over the Road Truckers Association, it's having the best roads in the nation, and Rutherford County's probably got the best roads in this state, at least the ones I've run across. There's not a gravel road out here. If there's a bridge that has a problem, these guys fix it for us. If I have somebody calling me about problem with road, or problem with the schools, I contact these people, and they get it done for us. Now, these guys are wanting to get rid of five of those people by making that vote and going to that new zone. That's the problem I've got. We've got something that works, and I don't see doing away with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Tiffany Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like Commissioner Allen served on the original committee, and I intentionally, whether you believe it or not, intentionally stayed away from every single meeting that they had, just like Commissioner Allen did. As a matter of fact, when my husband and I first got married and I first started serving on the commission, we had to make an agreement that we would not talk about commission business at home, because it did not go very well. So even though he served on the, this committee, we, the only thing that I have heard until tonight is we passed a map. So this is really the first time, because I was under the impression that we were going to have another month to be able to look at it and talk to our constituents, this is the first time I've been able to even look at the map and try to come up with some logical idea about the changes that we're effectively would make if we passed the map. I think that we are doing our constituents a disservice by voting on this tonight. I would even go as far as proposing a, an open hearing, so that they can come up here and speak to us. I mean, this is an important decision that we have to make in our county, and it's going to affect not only, excuse me, it's going to affect not only incumbency, but it's going to affect who represents each of these zones. And so some of the arguments that were made tonight, I agree with, some of the arguments that were made tonight, I don't agree with. And I, like Commissioner Phillips, have not made up my mind completely yet. But I think we need a little bit more time to be able to look at this, and to study it, and to think about it, because it is a really important decision for us to make. Thank you.
The other commissioners that wish to speak. Commissioner Turner.
Just real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of want to echo what Ms. Phillips said, that I'm planning to vote no against Mr. Farley's proposal, not because I'm endorsing the current map, but only because I'd like to have a little bit more time to be able to study the map. I'm not going to endorse one or the other tonight, and I certainly would like to go back to some of the individuals that are in my district that might be seeing this for the first time, either on television, or they've heard about it in the paper, and again, just really quick, I just don't know if I'd be doing them the service if I cast a vote one way or another tonight without really studying that a little bit longer, and I think Mr. Phillips had mentioned that that was actually the intention of the committee, was just to bring this up for presentation tonight, not necessarily a vote, and I'd certainly like to honor that, too. So I'm going to vote no on Mr. Farley's proposal, strictly for those reasons.
Other discussion, are you ready to vote? Commissioner Phillips, would you like to make one final comment here?
I really don't know what else to say, but just one, Jim, is it appropriate, is this motion appropriate? Because the recommendation out of that committee was to make a decision in January, and we're taking the recommendation from that committee and making a decision tonight. It's, I'm assuming that it probably is, and let me go ahead and say that the decision that I would make tonight would be based upon limited information that I've gotten from those folks who spoke tonight, and not on folks that were not expecting us to make a decision and would also like to have input. So my decision tonight, my vote tonight, might be different than it would be on, in January's meeting, but is it appropriate? Is this, is this a motion appropriate?
Yes, the motion is appropriately before the commission. The commission, under other business, can take action. You have an agenda item, so even though it's contrary to what your committee might have expected, or you might have expected...
expected, or you might have expected, again, this commission makes its decisions with regard to what actions it would take. So, it is appropriate if the commission wants to act on this tonight to do it. It's likewise appropriate if there's a motion to defer, to have that taken. But as of now, you have an appropriate motion on the floor, and that's what's before you, and it is legally appropriate.
I'll make one more attempt. I, I'd like to move that we table this or defer it till January, in essence, if that's an amendment, I'd.
I didn't, excuse me, they say they've called for a question. I didn't hear it, I was not paying close attention.
Well, there was a call for a question, but that wasn't a vote on the question.
No, I understand, but I should, I have to vote on the question if there has been a call for the question. There was a call for the question, I am properly informed. All in favor of the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, please cast your votes on the call for the question. Madam Clerk. No, 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 just, just tell them they have a right to.
Oh. Was there anyone that would like to?
But she hadn't said her thing.
Wishes to vote? Were anyone who would like to change your vote, and they do so?
Okay, record the votes.
Eleven yes, ten no. Motion passes.
Questions called for, we must now vote.
On the original motion?
On the original motion.
Which is to reject the proposal.
Yes, sir, agreed, please.
The original motion where, is to reject the proposal from the committee, and to retain and stay with the current description and definition of our road board and school board zones. That's the motion.
And tonight, on this, just strictly majority would rule on this motion, not two-thirds vote.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I think that a call for the question is our decision.
Okay, please give us a moment to review that. As big as this book is, the, our council says a five-minute recess might be wise while we study that. Okay.